Good evening. It is Monday, August 26th, and I call the Maple Plain City Council Meeting to Order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone will notice that Councilmember DeLuca is missing. He had a trip planned before he knew he was going to be running, so we wish him a restful time away. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda with a couple changes. We will be pulling Letter H and discussing Veterans Memorial Park bids on Wednesday, and then I would like to add the Letter H, Resolution 19-0826-02, canvassing the special election vote. With those two changes, looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLong. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is visitors to be heard, seen and hearing none. We will move on to the Orno Rotary Presentation. I invite forward our Rotarians.
Hello.
We are here tonight after another successful year of party in the park. We had great attendance, we had great sponsorship, and the partnership with City of Maple Plain Rotary and those citizens gained us $11,000 more dollars.
Woo-hoo!
To go toward the Veterans Memorial.
So, thank you for being here and presenting that. I know it was our second annual. The first year, we raised $9,000, and this year, $11,000. So that is $20,000 with the partnership with the Rotary and the city. So that is wonderful work, and we appreciate and value the partnership, and you will start to see work happening at the park soon, so we are super excited about that. We'd love to get a picture with our Rotarians and the chapter council.
And thank you again.
Are we balanced?
Detail.
Is it plugged in there?
Can you see Dave?
That's a good photo. We'll take one more.
Two more.
Alright, another very good shot.
Alright.
Yeah, thank you guys. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll put it on.
It's been my screensaver for a year on my computer.
Thanks, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
See you Thursday.
Alright, John, I think I actually did it right. Put it right here.
Alright. So that is exciting, and maybe next year, we'll be in the park with some renovations.
That's another day.
If not, down the road, we will be. Alright, next item of business is our consent agenda, which includes August accounts payable, pay request number eight to Northdale Construction, approval of deputy clerk to assistant to city administrator, and approval of the June 17th City Council Workshop Minutes. With that, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, can I pull A and B for two quick questions?
Yes, you may. Alright. With that, looking for a motion to approve Letters C and D.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Alright, motion carries. Councilmember Fay, Letter A, August accounts payable.
Bobby, quickly, AZT Laboratories, I'm assuming those $1,400 chemicals for the water treatment plant?
Yes.
Isn't that part of the bid package, chemicals up to $9,000? Can you explain to me then how we?
Yeah, the invoice date on there was from 7/23, so it could have been from right before that happened.
Okay. Okay, so we should not be seeing chemicals going forward?
You shouldn't. No, it would be part of our bill that we would then pay people service.
They pay and then we reimburse?
So they pay. We usually upfront, how it would work in the typical years upfront, we would give them-
$9,000.
$9,000, yep. If we went over that $9,000, they'd bill those back. Looking at how we have done the last few years, I don't foresee that happening unless there's some giant increase in chemicals in the future.
I don't want to beat this to death, but the $9,000 is not part of the monthly contract price? It's in addition to the monthly contract?
No, it's a part of it.
That's what I thought.
But if we go over-
I understand, but we haven't even come close to going over.
Right, but this is prior when we still have our own staff, so we're paying those fees.
Okay, and then subsequent pages down, mail finance, is that insurance on postage machine, $171? Are we insuring?
No, I think that's actually, it actually, I think it is either insurance on our postage machine that we have, or it's some sort of licensing that we need to be able to operate that machine. It's an annual fee of that amount. It's part of a contract that we have to have that equipment in the office.
That's all I had on accounts payable.
Okay. With that, why don't we also discuss pay request number eight then, and we'll look for them both at the same time.
Fair enough. Alan, welcome.
Good time.
I'm not going to be too tough. Are you comfortable that, at this stage of the game, all measurements are final?
I spoke with the contractor yesterday. There will be one additional 80 square yards of sod. So we measured the sod, and they measured it, and it's pretty common where there's a small discrepancy, and we said we negotiate, you know, the difference. So there'll be that, and then there's a small, I know there's an outstanding rock issue we used for temporary rock, which was before I was around, and that's something Dan has to, it's going to be with Northdale, and Dan to review that. But those should be the only two items outstanding.
They've been completed, they're just outstanding, so really, the only thing they have are these two, whatever, I don't care to know what they are, but these two restorative items that are included in their price to date. Because they're restorative items?
Well, there's two outstanding restoration-like punch list items that came up after the punch list was completed, so there's those two. That's not, there shouldn't be any cost with those. There's a small settlement in a yard, I don't know if it was Independence or Howard, and there's also some Class V that was apparently spilled on top of some grass, and then they removed the Class V, but then the grass died, so then they had to come by and either reseed it or re-sod a small area, and they'll do it at the same time when they do that, the small sunken area by the curb step.
Okay, and then one last thing, and then it has to do with the shoring of the quantities, and it's line item 27. And it has to do with three-inch-thick wear course driveway.
Yep, so that one was one of the ones they submitted, a quantity, they actually submitted for 867 square yards, and we field-measured 853, so we split the difference with them.
Okay, that's not my question.
Instead of spending time to re-measure it.
Last month, they added a request that included 102, 182 square yards of driveway course.
So that was-
Which brought it up to 601. Now they're getting another 259, bringing it up to a total of 860. We haven't thrown any asphalt down in that area for months.
Those are outstanding quantity issues. So the one we paid last month, that's what we had measured to date from, based on old records from when it was done, and we actually went out and re-measured them, and we came up with, there must have been a driveway that was missed or two, so that's why, that's why you see the additional.
Okay, the contract quantity, which what they bid off of was the 530, and now we're up to 860, a 62% increase in square yards of wear course. Is that a miscalculation on your behalf, or an overuse of material on theirs?
Well, I don't want to say, I don't want to point fingers at one person or the other, but when we do our estimates, we take an assumed value based on the back of the curb for our disturbing limit. So let's say it's 10 feet, alright? So every driveway, let's say we're going to assume every driveway goes back 10 feet, and then, you know, and usually that covers us, because we do a lot of reconstruct projects, so that's us average, which is about the right way. What happens is sometimes, what happens if there was a great issue, if there's a crack in the driveway or something?
And they went 14.
They go farther, and that's one of the quantities that usually gets overrun, and it happens. We don't like to see it overrun in that large of a percent. That's not something we want, but it happens sometimes. But if you look at, there's other quantities that we are under, so we are still significantly under the contract amount.
It's understandable.
So, I mean, like I said, we do our best to try to get as close as we can, but sometimes there's things that, you know, it's an estimate, and that's why they get paid by the unit commodity.
Thank you. That's what I assumed. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Letter A and B from the consent agenda, August accounts payable, and pay request number eight to Northdale Construction.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Fay.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Next item of business is our administrative reports, which were in the packet, and everyone's had a chance to read. If there's no discussion or questions for staff that are here, we will approve all of these at once. Alright, with that, looking for a motion to approve the City Engineer August Month Report, the City Planner August Month Report, West Hennepin Public Safety July Report, City Administration August Report, Public Works People Services August Month Report, and Quarterly Financial Update.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. My only point of discussion is I just want to bring up, if we could continue to get our bills from our planner, because this is just through March, we want to get you paid, too.
Sure.
For the great work. Alright, any further discussion? All in favor of approving all administrative reports as submitted?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Next item of business is our administrative reports, which were in the packet, and everyone's had a chance to read. If there's no discussion or questions for staff that are here, we will approve all of these at once. Alright, with that, looking for a motion to approve the City Engineer August Month Report, the City Planner August Month Report, West Hennepin Public Safety July Report, City Administration August Report, Public Works People Services August Month Report, and Quarterly Financial Update.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. My only point of discussion is I just want to bring up, if we could continue to get our bills from our planner, because this is just through March, we want to get you paid, too.
Sure.
For the great work. Alright, any further discussion? All in favor of approving all administrative reports as submitted?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Alright, next item of business is our public hearing, the roadway and drainage easement, vacation of the Gateway property.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. This item is coming before you, somewhat of a cleanup item relating to the Gateway redevelopment project that we've previously approved. When we previously approved the Gateway preliminary and final plat, which allowed the redevelopment of that property to occur, we had identified, and when I say "we," it's not really the city, it's the developer's engineer, but they had identified that there was right-of-way for Oak Street, which was the former Oak Street that had never been developed there, but there was right-of-way for that street in that location, and we vacated Oak Street right-of-way when we, prior to adopting the final plat. One of the things that came up in a then-later title search was that there were some drainage and utility easements, and a utility easement that was not previously identified on the initial survey, and those easements were associated with the Oak Street right-of-way, but they just were not identified in the initial survey and the title work that was completed initially. Because of that, we are going back now and asking the City Council to consider vacating the roadway and drainage and utility easements that are highlighted in the packet on the survey and shown then also on the final plat. They're identified by those document numbers, and then we're, part of the drainage and utility easement that you see also relates to the site for the former park-and-ride, parking lot area. We had a standard 10-foot drainage and utility easement that goes around the perimeter of that property. It would have gotten done when the property was broken off from that, from the bigger property at some point, and again, that just got missed in the survey that there was, in fact, a drainage and utility easement there. We've got it now, and we're asking that the City Council consider vacation of the roadway easement and the drainage and utility easements as shown. This is a public hearing, so we do notice that, and we require a public hearing, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Alright, with that, I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLong. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Alright, the public hearing is open regarding the drainage and easement vacating on the Gateway property. The public hearing is open, and the public hearing is open, and the public hearing is open. Alright, with that, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Moved by Fay.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so with that, we are looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-0826-01, a resolution vacating for roadway drainage and utility easements relating, just lost my spot, relating to the replotting of the gateway of Maple Plain. Sorry about that.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by DeLong.
Second.
Second by Fay, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
The ayes have it four to zero, with Mike DeLuca absent.
The next item of business is city employee vacation policy review.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. What you have before you is a outline in a memo that lays out the vacation policy that currently is, and then a recommendation from the Personnel Committee on what the new vacation policy could potentially be. So currently, the only change that arises in, that is being proposed by the Personnel Committee is that it's, we have a vacation leave schedule in our employee handbook, and it breaks it down by length of service and then hours per payroll period. So currently, if you are a brand-new employee to five years, you accrue 3.08 hours every 80 hours. Six to 10 years, it's 4.62, or 120 hours, and then 11-plus years would be 6.15 hours. What we're looking to do is change it where the length of service would be, 0 to 3 years is 3.08 hours or 80 hours a year. 0 to 10 would be 4 point, I'm sorry, 3 plus to 10 years would be 4.62, or 120 hours, or 11-plus then would be 6.15 hours. So it's just a shift in the length of service that's going on. It still keeps the standard amount of hours per payroll that would be accrued, it's just a change in the length of service there, so.
So it's not four to 10, it's three plus?
Well, that's the tough part. How do you, I have trouble-
Because before we had six to 10.
I know.
That's where I was confused in reading it. I just want to clarify.
And that's where, I'm confused reading it the first way, because then I'm like, so if you, what about five and a half years? Like, you're past the five, but you're not at the six, so where are you?
Right, so what this is saying is at three-
Yep.
At their three-year anniversary, then they would-
Correct.
Start to accrue it.
Well, there is no such thing as zero years of service either, so I mean-
Well, no, if you're one month in, you don't have a year either. You know, I don't know.
I just want to make sure we're clear, because I was confused. And if it's just me, I'm okay with that, and if everyone else is clear, but I just want it communicated clearly.
Three years and one day.
Then you're getting-
To 10 months.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page. Alright. Any other questions for staff? Or the Personnel Committee?
Yeah.
We're all looking at you. Alright, so with that then, I am looking for a motion to approve the new city employee vacation policy with the change that after three years and one day of service, it would go to 120 hours.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Next item of business is ordinance 305, adding brewery license to Section 110.22, kinds of liquor license.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I also helped with this. This, in front of you tonight is a proposed ordinance amendment which would amend the city's liquor licensing provisions that are in the city's ordinance, and it would add kinds of liquor license associated with brew pubs, taprooms, and the specific operations of those entities. We have a brew pub that we approved earlier in the, earlier this year, I believe it was January this year. So when we approved that, we redefined some of the brewery definitions within our zoning ordinance. This is now taking some of that and amending our liquor ordinance, which is outside of our zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance, so that the city can properly license the entity that we previously approved under the site plan approval. Brew pubs and the brew pub and the taprooms are licensed differently by the state, and the biggest distinction that we're really trying to identify is off-sale licensing, and so rather than just singling that out, we're actually just creating licensure for a taproom. Taproom is going to be a beer maker, manufacturer that operates in accordance with Minnesota statute, and the state's very clear on how you, what, the limit on how much you can produce in order to fall within the definition of that, and then we're going to also create a license for a brew pub on sale and a brew pub off sale. Brew pubs by law are permitted, if we license them, to sell off-sale, but only essentially growlers and no other forms of off-sale. In this particular case, which the next item on your agenda is the liquor license, you would be licensing the brew pub to have a full liquor license on the premise because they have a restaurant, and then you'd be authorizing them to have an off-sale license, which would be a brew pub off-sale only. So it's not a full off-sale, it's just in accordance with Minnesota statutes on the ability for them to sell beer manufactured on their premise. And it's really limited to the growler sales and/or the collar, or whatever they call them now, but as defined by Minnesota statutes. So this ordinance update would allow the city to just license in accordance with really how we're defining these entities, and so we're adding three different license types to the city's liquor license ordinance. We did go through this with the city attorney, he reviewed it and said it was, he liked the ordinance as it's presented, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And I'm assuming this is very similar to what other cities are doing with their brew pubs?
This is like state statute language and very, very consistent, so.
Okay, great.
Mark, I've got a question.
Yep.
So in paragraph J, it says that in accordance with Minnesota State Statute, authorizes the holder of a brewer's license. At what point in the process do we know that they have a brewer's license? Because it's not requested on the application. Is that part of the licensing that's already been handled in the sole process, or?
Actually, just because we issue, the state process, all those forms actually go through us, and then we present it to the state. So it goes through our staff. It doesn't go before City Council, those state licenses, just our city license process does. So they have to get state approval before they can even get their liquor license from us.
Okay.
We can approve it ahead of time, but they're not going to be able to serve or operate without that state license, and we get that.
Oh, so we're before the state?
Well, it goes either way. It doesn't matter. All that does matter is that the state license goes through the, goes through staff, and then staff to the state, and then from state to staff to the applicant.
Okay.
The liquor license will get parked until the state does their groundwork. I have a quick question. The on, excuse me, the off-sale liquor license component of it, which is the growlers only, if I read this correctly, kind of rolls up, according to state statute, it kind of rolls up under the on-sale liquor license, and that's why he doesn't have to have a on-sale and an off-sale?
Yeah, no, so we're defining actually, we wanted to be clear on what the off-sale, so you're right, under the state statute, off-sale rolls up underneath the on-sale-
Correct.
-brew pub license. We're defining it to be clear on what off-sale is, and we had this conversation, do we need to add that or not? We're defining it in our own licensing, which doesn't have to necessarily be the exact same as the state. We're saying we're licensing off-sale malt liquor produced and packaged on the premise only in the form of a growler.
Got it.
And that's it. So it's a little bit redundant, because the state license is a little different, but we said we want it to be clear. Now, what I was saying on the restaurant portion of it, because he is operating as a brew pub, which has the restaurant function to it, meaning he's producing and serving food on the premise, he's going, he's asking for a full liquor license that is associated with a restaurant, and that's different than a liquor license for on-sale, off-sale, for like a brew, I'm sorry, a taproom, which a taproom then cannot get that full liquor license, because they don't produce and serve food on the premise.
Correct.
I don't know if that, did that answer your question? This, the liquor licensing requirements are complicated.
Well, I just don't want there to be a hiccup. John researched this, he's comfortable with it, we're following state statute. I don't want to find out that they're ready to open doors and we missed something.
And that's why we're doing this now, is we're trying to get this in line so that we can issue the proper licenses, and I think we feel good at this time, so. Yeah, we went through this, we've been talking about this for months. I know staff is preparing for this, so.
Will this application then be updated with the brew pub checkbox?
Yeah, no, that's something that we can definitely, I mean, it's a mixture of different licenses, but yeah, no, we can add it on. This is our first brew pub.
I was going to say.
We haven't done it before.
Okay.
It's a good problem to have, to update applications, tab ozzing things. Alright, so with that, looking for a motion to approve ordinance number 305, an ordinance adding brewery license to Section 110.22, kinds of liquor license.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, then this is an ordinance, so this will be a roll call vote.
Yeah. Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it four to zero with one absentee.
And the next item of business, Letter D, approval of iron exchange brew pub liquor license.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is the application for our very first brew pub, so this is very exciting. The way that this worked is, this is a new application, and these applications only run till the end of the calendar year, so you would see this again then next, either in December, or, yeah, it'd be in December, at the end of December, to approve for the next year, so maybe that tells us something. Hopefully, this thing is open sooner rather than later. But what ended up happening is the application came in, they filed a new application fee, the background check fee, on-sale, because it is a brew pub, like Mark was saying, it is a restaurant, it is able to have the full liquor license. We checked off-sale on here, just because of the brew pub or the growler component of it, and then the Sunday on-sale component of it, too, so they can operate on Sundays, too, as well. So that's what we've checked for this at this time, and that's what we're looking to approve this liquor license for Iron Range Brewery or brew pub. So there is one stipulation that I have, is this needs to get the final background approval yet from West Hennepin, and so I want to approve this license pending a approved background check from West Hennepin. That would be the only suggestion that staff has. I know I talked with the applicant. We think we have some time before they're going to open up, so it's not like it's a rush, but he wanted to check this box off as soon as possible with council. Again, if there was something that came up in the background check that would give pause or hesitancy, and it's pretty well-defined on what that is, usually it's alcohol violations of any kind, then what we would end up doing is that this application would not be approved then by that background check, but we can approve it pending that, so.
Alright, so we are looking for a motion for the approval of iron exchange brew pub liquor license pending the background check of West Hennepin Public Safety.
Could I ask a question first?
Yes, you may.
Bobby, you said that this particular liquor license will only be valid for the remaining four and a half months of this calendar year, and will be putting it in the pile with the other ones at the end of the year for the calendar year 2020. Are any of the fees on this liquor license prorated?
No, they're not. So we've had that conversation. We had a similar type of situation pop-up earlier in the year, and we kept it the same all the way through when that happened earlier in the summer. So this is, I was very clear with the applicant and shared with him that this is only for the calendar year. I want you to know that before going forward. He said, "I completely understand," and I'm still wanting to move forward with the application.
Good question. Any further discussion? Okay, still looking for a motion then?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. We've already done the discussion, and we can, this is on a roll call, right? call, right?
Correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? All right, motion carries. Next item of business is performance spot bonus for deputy clerk.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. As many of you guys are aware, staff is a little short-staffed right now, and we have been since the end of May, and really what we're looking at here is that Sharon, our deputy clerk, has been outstanding in that time period, while also, you know, life happens too, but I just wanted to point out that I have noticed that she's gone above and beyond her duties as the deputy clerk, has been filling in and doing a lot of, a lot of work that was done by the assistant to the city administrator prior to tonight's meeting where she now holds that title. So in, kind of to acknowledge that, I've brought forward a spot bonus of $2,500. Some of the, some, the big thing that stood out to me is Sharon really did the elections on her own, a lot of it this year, really ran with that, and that was very time-consuming. You know, at, at times she went above and beyond and took homework home on the weekends, which is not something that we try to do, but sometimes that's, that's what ends up needing to be done. And she did that while, you know, maintaining a outstanding work ethic and having some professionalism while doing that. The city budget, we budgeted last year, was about $6,000 for these spot performance bonuses, and so this $2,500 spot bonus, I would recommend that, that we move forward with this for our deputy clerk. Now, assistant to city administrator Sharon Spicer. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question. Just a lump sum, how did you go about calculating the $2,500? Was there a methodology to that, as hours, hourly rate, or did you just say $2,500 is a nice round number?
Uh, a bit of both. I know it's, it's close to what she would be making, you know, with some of those duties, but I do think just being shorthanded overall too, there's a little extra there for, to reward that behavior, and I think it's, it's appropriate and with taxes coming out too, knowing what kind of that number is in my head, I think it's a, it's a good gesture and sends a strong message to Sharon about how we feel about her going above and beyond there.
Any further discussion?
I would just pass on our gratitude to her for being willing to step up and give up her part-time schedule, so.
Yeah.
Seriously, tell her thank you.
I'll do.
And for the extra work the last couple months.
Yeah.
And hours. Spent some long days. All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the performance spot bonus for deputy clerk.
So moved?
Moved by DeLong.
Second.
Second by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Next item of business is approval of firefighters Jake Delisle and Aubrey Sukup from probation.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. I have a memo in front of me written by Dave Isinger, our fire chief, that lays out that both Jake and Aubrey have been serving on the Maple Plain Fire Department for over a year now. And how it works with the Maple Plain Fire Department is when you're brought on, there's a one-year probationary period in there. And there's a number of different things that need to be accomplished in that year to get off of that probationary period. There's a lot of training. Every Monday night, there's department training, then there's also department firefighter one, first responder school, I don't know if firefighter two is included in that or not, but it's usually in the first year, about three nights a week of firefighter training. And both Jake and Aubrey have done an exceptional job. I can tell you, I've heard nothing but positives from both of these two firefighters, and at this time, the chief is offering a recommendation to move both Jake and Aubrey, it, it sounds weird, I don't know how to phrase it, off probation, because they're no longer going to be probationary firefighters, but they have accomplished everything that needed to be accomplished in that, in that year time period. And so we're moving them kind of out of that gray area in, in the full-time membership of the department. They were always full-time members prior to, but they're off probation now, so.
All right, so with that then, we are looking for a motion to remove Jake Delisle and Aubrey Sukup as probationary fighters to paid-on-call firefighters for the Maple Plain Fire Department.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Fay.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. Any discussion? I just want to thank them and their families for their commitment. As our administrator stated, it takes a ton of time that they put in, especially during the first year, so kudos to them and for their servant heart, and thank them just for their commitment and safety over all of them. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Next item of business is approval of Patrick Felton to probationary firefighter.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. One of the most important things that the city can continue to do is recruit volunteer firefighters. As the mayor had just mentioned, it's very time-consuming volunteer work, and we're fortunate enough to have a applicant that went through the full process. Patrick Felton is a resident here in town, has applied to be a firefighter with the Maple Plain Fire Department. Mr. Felton, he's approved all the checklist with the exception of one checklist, and the issue was with that is he, the application we filled out was dated incorrectly on the background check portion. It was dated eighteen instead of nineteen, and because of that, we have to have him refill out that one form in order to get a background check and literally change the eight to nine, and really just kind of have him fill out that form again. So he's all ready to go, he's passed all the other components, there's a physical fitness test, there's a psych, uh, psych evaluation, there's a number of different things, there's multiple, there's an interview process that he has to go through, and all of those boxes have been checked, just the last thing, like I said, would be that background check. And then this would put Patrick on that probationary one-year period, and then in a year's time, he'd be back in August of next year, and we hopefully had checked all the boxes for the first-year firefighter, and we're good to go from that standpoint. But this is exciting, I love seeing these because it means that we've got a growing department, and being a small town, not everyone can say that right now, so we're very fortunate for, for having that. And so with that, I'd make the recommendation, along with the fire chief here, Dave, that we move forward with Patrick Felton pending a background check by West Hennepin Public Safety. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Will they be able to do that background check before our next council meeting and whatever?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect, so then we want to do this tonight. All right, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Patrick Felton to probationary firefighter pending the background check with West Hennepin Public Safety.
So moved?
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. We removed discussing Veterans Memorial Park bids, we will be having a special meeting on Wednesday evening at 5:30 to discuss those. If anyone would like to join us, please do. And we added resolution nineteen dash zero-eight-two-six dash zero-two, canvassing the vote and declaring the results, and I'll turn that back to staff.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. It's very important that after we have an election, that the city council, which also acts as the canvassing board, approves the election results. And so we did have a special election here in Maple Plain on August thirteenth of 2019. During that special election, we had two city council positions that were up, we had a, one position with the term ending in 2020, and councilmember Mike DeLuca ran under that position, and then we had a second term that was ending in 2022, and we had councilmember John DeLong run for that seat. And so the election results had both Mike DeLuca, councilmember Mike DeLuca, and councilmember John DeLong winning those terms, and so with that, I'm looking for the city council to canvas that special election result. So be happy to answer any questions pertaining to that.
Any questions regarding the special election? Okay, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to canvas the results.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cahill.
John can't make the motion himself?
No. All right.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
The ayes have it four to zero with one absentee.
Congratulations, councilmember DeLong and councilmember DeLuca, thank you for your willingness to serve and courage to run. All right, with that, we have council reports this month. Who would like to start?
I will. Light month, I continued to attend Rotary, and it certainly has paid off in spades, as you can tell, the presentation with their participation, our participation with the city in the party in the park, raising $11,000 for a total of $20,000 for the park improvements, specifically the Veterans Memorial. I attended Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed a week ago Thursday. I will tell you that there are going to be some changes made, Bobby is aware of that. We're losing a staff member and in the process of soliciting bids for engineers. And because of that, Hennepin County has elected to get out of the business of handling the technical components, so we will have to pass a resolution here prior to Jan, December thirty-first to take authority of the JPA. We've been allowing the watershed to be, um, our JPA, Maple Plain needs to take it back.
Correct.
Okay. Other than that, oh, and attended with all of you, the Night to Unite earlier in the month, which was a great turnout and a lot of fun.
Thank you, councilmember Fay. Councilmember Cahill?
Yes, thank you to everyone who attended the Night to Unite, so it was a great night to have everyone come out. I also attended the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce, and we had a great movie in the park last Friday, so lots of girls having sleepovers converged upon the park for Mary Poppins, so good time was had by all.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember DeLong?
On August fifth, I attended the police commission meeting, first police commission meeting that I've attended. On the sixth, the community picnic, thanks to the sponsors, which looks like you're going to get into that as well. And then on the eighth, WAFTA, or WAFTA, however you pronounce that.
WAFTA, Western Area Fire Association.
So, yeah, Western Area Fire Training Association, it's the first meeting they've had in quite some time, and actually it was pretty informative. Big thank you to Representative Dean Phillips because he actually sponsored legislation that was passed in the U.S. House of Representatives that could actually put something in motion that we may actually have some sort of resolution. It could be years out still, but it did pass in the House where they will, they're going to look at that. So that was a really informative and some good news there.
All right. Thank you. I as well attended the chamber meeting with councilmember Cahill, and we were the speakers that month, and the local businesses are very excited about the park improvements and the gateway, so we were thrilled to be able to share that. And with councilmember DeLong, we really focused on the budget at the police commission meeting, and just, we're just thankful for the staff that we have there and all that they do to protect and serve. I was able to attend my first Minnesota Women in City Government meeting. I was also able to attend the Downlos Senior Center meeting, and just want to remind our residents that there is a bus that will come to your front door in Maple Plain and take you to the senior center twice a week, so if you're interested in that, please contact the senior center or myself or city hall, and we'll help you make those arrangements. So it's, I believe it's $2 round trip, and then once a month, they will stop at the strip mall, and you can go grocery shopping or go to CVS or whatever you'd like to do. So it's a great service that we are trying to offer, so if there's a need, we will continue to do that. I was also able to attend the Caring for Kids breakfast with other mayors in the Orno School District, and it's really just about starting kids strong and thriving all along, and it's a community initiative to close the opportunity and achievement gap, so it was good to be part of that. As council, we've all been really busy, we had the EDA meeting, which is exciting, we're still working on the downtown, and hopefully we can get something to work there, so thankful for everyone's work on that. We've also, staff worked hard to prepare a budget, and we had a budget workshop meeting, that went well as well, so thankful for all the work everyone's doing to keep things running. And then, as everyone mentioned, the community picnic, we were blessed with a gorgeous night, a great turnout, thank you to the fire department and West Hennepin Public Safety for showing up as well, and the movie in the park, and I just also wanted to thank all of the sponsors who made all of the city events possible, to Brian Swenson, BSQ's Barbecue, Forkless, Monies, Randy Sanitation, Christ Lutheran Church, Tri-K Sports, McGarry's Pub, Baggy Joe, Carlson Wellness, and Kathy Archer. So thank you to all of our businesses that have sponsored and made all those events possible. Oops, I forgot the Westonka JC, so thank you to them too, anyone else that I might have forgotten. We're grateful for the support, so we can pull our community together and spend time together, having fun and getting to know our neighbors. Also, just wanted to make sure everyone has on their radar, be thinking about who should be the next Good Neighbor Award. Nominations are open, it was out in the newsletter, and they are accepted until October twentieth, so be thinking about who is worthy of that honor, and you can go online or stop by city hall and nominate them, we'd love to hear from you. All right, any other business or comments from staff or council? All right, hearing none, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councilmember Fay.
I'll second that.
Second by councilmember DeLong. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-eight.
Had to pull that from DeLuca.